All right, today is Monday, January 31st, 2022, and I will call to order the special, special meeting for the Budget and Audit Committee. Janet, can you call the roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember One.
I am here.
And Councilmember Till, or sorry, Vice Mayor Tillman, or Councilmember Tillman?
You're fine. I am, I'm here as well. Thank you. Do we have any public joining us today? If so, can we please see if there are any public comments on non-agenda items? That's item number two on the agenda.
At this time, I do not have any hands raised on non-agenda items.
Okay. Great, then I will close item number two on the agenda, and we will move to item number three, which are action items. We have one. And that is the audited annual financial report of the City of Clayton for the fiscal year ended June 30th, and I will hand that over to Catherine, our Finance Director.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. Today, for your consideration, are the draft audit reports and financial statements for July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. The audit was performed by Cropper Accountancy Corporation, and the lead auditor for the City of Clayton was the CPA Bryce Rojas, who is here with us today to present his findings. I started my employment with the City of Clayton on October 4th, 2022, well after the June 30th, 2021 fiscal year had ended. Before my arrival, there was an interim Finance Director, Sandra Soto, who started just after June 30th, and left shortly after my arrival. This is important to note when looking at the import, report on internal controls, specifically all the journal entries that had to be made. Proper accountancy's examinations were made in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, and standards applicable to financial audits contained in government, governmental auditing standards, and the state controllers' minimum audit requirements for cities in California. Those standards require the auditors to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatements. The auto, the audit also includes assessing our accounting principles, followed by management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. The city has received an unqualified opinion from Cropper Accountancy for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, verifying that our financial statements are free from, from material misstatements, and that the City of Clayton's financial personnel have followed proper accounting principles, and that the financial statements have been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The staff report that you all have highlights some noteworthy items. There was a decrease to the general fund, to the ending fund balance, in the amount of $55,000 as a result of lower-than-expected investment results, and a decrease in business licenses, permits and fees, fines, forfeitures, and closures. As a result, the general fund unassigned fund balance decreased to just over 5.8 million. The following funds had a net increase to their fund balance. The Huda gas tax saw a $114,000 increase to end at $509,000 for an ending fund balance of $509,000. And the RMRA gas tax saw an increase of $192,000 to end at an ending fund balance of $620,000. And the Landscape Maintenance District saw an increase of $22,000 to end at almost 1.1 million. The Grove Park saw an increase of $58,000 to end at $465,000. And Measure J saw a very small decrease of $2,000 to end at $86,000. Endeavor Hall, the city's only proprietary business-like operation, saw a more significant decrease in fund balance than other years, primarily due to the closures caused by the pandemic and the inability to rent out the facility. There was also normal depreciation expense that contributed to this net decrease of $74,000. Endeavor Hall still had a positive ending fund balance of $923,000 for the year. However, the city should examine a more sustainable operating model for this fund with at least a minimum goal of breaking even, if that is possible. The Rainy Day Fund was established in 2020, 2021, in order to set aside excess funds to be used for unexpected costs that may arise during the year. At year-end, this fund had a balance of $177,000. When examining the total financial picture of the city, we must look at the government-wide financial statements. In the long run, increases or decreases in the net position serve as a useful indicator of whether the financial position of the City of Clayton is improving or deteriorating. For the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, the total government-wide net position decreased by $892,000, with governmental activity net position decreasing by $817,000, and business activities net position decreasing by almost $75,000. As of June 30th, 2021, the city reported total government-wide net position of $45 million, of which the largest portion totaling almost $30 million is classified as net investment in capital assets and is not in liquid form. The remaining government net position of almost $2.4 million is reported as unrestricted and may be used to meet the ongoing obligations of the citizens and creditors. This net position is a good indicator of the long-term financial health of the city. As previously stated, it's reported on a full accrual basis and includes all inflows and outflows of economic resources, which include long-term pension liabilities, depreciation, and other long-term assets and liabilities. The net position from year-ending June 30th, 2020, which is last, last year, was $3.35 million. So there was almost a $1 million decrease from fiscal year 2020 to 2021, and that's primarily due to pension liabilities, decreased investment gains, increased healthcare costs, OPEB valuation, and depreciation expenses. Now I'm going to pass it over to Bryce, so he can present his findings.
Thank you.
Can we talk for a second about that? I'm just curious. Or do we have time for questions later? Is that better?
We can do questions now or later, however you guys. Might be best to do it now, so that you don't forget what you need to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious, but you know, the decrease in net position of nearly a million dollars is like almost a 30% decrease. Do we have a projection? I know that we're, we are all currently working on future year projections. Do we carry it out to this, to this item as well? Because I'm curious what our expectation of net position will be on the out-years.
So if I could just clarify one thing, this quote, almost million dollars is off of a base of $45 million, not on a base of five or six million. So that's government-wide assets, including investments in buildings, property, land, etc.
It's all, it's the all-in, right?
Right, so a million out of 45 million is a lot smaller percentage than a million out of 6 million. So I just, I thought I heard you say 30%, and it's much less than 30%.
Well, I guess, all right, the change from, from the prior year balance, you know, it was 3.35, and now it's.
So and primarily, it's, it's due to the pension liability. That, 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 like, that's over 600, I believe it's like 625,000. The net pension liability increased, and so that's what caused, I mean, that's a big portion of that decrease.
Okay.
So, you know, we would have to look at that with our actuaries. And kind of determine over the next, you know, five years, what that's going to look like, but that's also kind of difficult, you know, it's difficult to predict outcomes.
All right, cool. Thank you. Oh, well, we can get back to this later. Then, to me, to interrupt, right?
That is fine. That's a good question. So is it okay if I share my screen? Is that possible? Let's see, where to go?
You should be able to do that.
Share screen. Okay, so this is a lot of presentation. I think in your packet, it might have been a little different than what I'm going to present today. I thought about it over the weekend and decided to kind of simplify it, modify it a little bit. So as, as Catherine mentioned, my name is Bryce Rojas. I'm the partner here at Cropper Row, also kind of known as Cropper Accountancy. And I performed the audit. I've been the partner for the past two years. And we were able to issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, and that's the highest quality outcome that you can hope for when issuing an opinion. And as Catherine went through, she was able to explain that city's net position decreased about $890,000, down to $45 million. But out of that, 2.38 is unrestricted net position, and we'll talk more about this later, and also about the general funds operations. But general funds operations resulted in a $56,000 decrease to fund balance. 6.1 million was the fund balance of the general fund, and out of that, 5.8 is unassigned, 5.8 million is unassigned. And as a product of our audit, we issue a letter on internal controls, and that's the last three pages of the financial statement report. Out of 177 pages, 74, six pages, it's the last three pages. And our audit, we don't audit internal controls, but it's impossible to do our job if we don't get, gain an understanding of internal controls and see what's going on, and notice some areas of deficiencies. And during this audit, we noticed a couple, or four material weaknesses. And as you know, there's been a lot of turnover in management at the city for the past three, four years. And Catherine came in, as she mentioned, in October, after the year-end, and after another person at her started closing the, the financial statements. And it was because there wasn't anything for her to follow, it was hard for her to close the books. And she did her best, and she did a really good job. I think Catherine and Rena have the city in a good position. I think they're really good for the city. And I think they're already doing a really good job. Rena's been around for a year or so. But the continuity of personnel has been a material weakness, and it was a material weakness during this past audit. And so written policies and procedures for closing books would be very helpful for, for the future in case Catherine hits lottery and decides she's done working. So that's one area. And then we also noticed that the books aren't being closed periodically, and not just reconciled every couple of months, but, but actually closed, so that past information remains relevant and reliable. We recommend that every quarter, or however often, that the books are actually closed and locked, so that future entries don't affect past results. And we also noted quite a few journal entries were needed to close the notes receivable and notes payable during the year. As you know, there's, the city has notes and assessments receivable and payable from external sources, but then also going between funds. Money comes into one fund and it goes to another, and then there's three or four balances that are affected just from money coming in at one, from one source. And so we're recommending that these annual journal entries for these notes and receivables, notes receivable and payables are defined and used every single year, so it makes it easy for the Finance Director to perform these entries. And we also noted that capital assets were purchased during the year, and they were recorded in the fixed asset module, and they were recorded in the general ledger. But then the two didn't reconcile, so the balances were off, and it took a couple, it took a while to figure out exactly what was going on and reconcile it to. So we're recommending that during these close-up books, the fixed asset module balances are reconciled to the general ledger balances. And then we also noted that IT might be in need of review at the city, and we're recommending that just a general review of IT goes on, and some of the safeguards and improvements, policies and procedures that could occur would be periodic required password updates, remote access safeguards over the pandemic, people had to work remotely. So we're just recommending a review of those policies and procedures, the network access safeguards, and maybe mobile device restrictions. We've noticed, not just here, but in other governmental agencies, one of the biggest or the most common areas of fraud is from phishing or stealing of IDs and passwords. And so we think a, a good review might help prevent that from happening at the city. And so as, as Catherine mentioned, the net position in the city, 45 million. And out of that, 30 million is tied up in capital assets, not tied up, but it is capital assets, is roads, cars, other infrastructure at the city, so you can't spend that. 13 million out of the 45 million is restricted for special projects. And then that leaves about 2.3 million as unrestricted, that isn't tied to anything. And then similarly, with the general fund, the general fund balance is 6 million, and, and out of that, 121,000 is non-spendable. That's like prepaid expenses. And then 177,000 is committed, and this right here is the, the Rainy Day Fund Catherine mentioned earlier. And for a while, we thought we were going to present the Rainy Day Fund as a separate fund in the back of the financials, but it should actually be part of the general fund, and so we presented it as part of the general fund. And so that committed balance is the Rainy Day Fund. And that leaves about $5.8 million in unassigned fund balance. So if you were to get in all of your receivables, pay off all of your liabilities for the general fund, you'd be left with about $5.8 million. And then here's just a visual presentation of the government-wide assets and deferred, deferred outflows. As you can tell, 57% of that is for capital assets, and the next largest component of assets in deferred outflows is cash and investments, about 14 million. And Catherine's already gone through some of this, so I'm just going to kind of quickly go through. Here are the liabilities for the city, for the whole city, and the largest portion of that is the net pension liability. And then the next largest portion is net OPEB liability. And, yeah, so that's that. And then a net position, about 29 million, as I said, is in, that's many capital assets. The next largest is restricted, and then unrestricted is about 2.3 million. And then just going to the general fund, the operations of the city, the assets for the general fund of the 6.6 million, 5.8 of it is cash, and then 500,000 is accounts receivable. And for the liabilities, the general fund, the largest portion is the deferred revenue, and I think that's the SV90s, is that, is that right, Karen? Catherine, sorry?
Yes, and these are current, right?
Yeah, these are.
Yeah, current liabilities.
Current liabilities, general fund, we're taking out net pension liability and OPEB liability. And then the accounts payable is about 91,000 for general fund. And here's the year-to-year change on general, sorry, this general, general fund, fund balance, it's kind of weird to say. Large, huge portion of the 6 million is unassigned. And just quickly, the pension liability is about 5.3 million, with deferred outflows 900,000, which is kind of like an asset, and then about 340,000 in deferred inflows, which is similar liability. And the net OPEB liability for the city is a lot smaller, about 500,000, with deferred outflows of 50,000, deferred inflows of 25. So are there any questions for me? Anything I can answer for you, clarify?
I want to go back to a couple of the comments that you made at the outset. Going back to my page numbers about the material weaknesses.
Yes.
Okay. So with, in regards to the continuity of personnel, and, and in addition, locking down the, closing and locking down the books. When you mentioned that there was nothing for Catherine to follow, can you elaborate on that a little bit? I'm trying to understand. I realize that there was turnover. Are you saying that there were no, no procedures written down, so that if anybody were, were to come on board, they're starting from scratch?
Maybe I didn't use the right phrase. I don't know if there was nothing for her to follow, but it wasn't. He might want to speak for me, Catherine, but it was harder for her to follow. It's hard when you come in brand-new to a city or anywhere, an entity, and try to close the books for something you've never done before. And so she did really well, but there were just areas where she wasn't as familiar with, and so she needed help closing those, or.
Yeah, and there, there are, you know, some written procedures. There's an accounting manual that definitely needs to be updated.
Okay.
And there's, there are some closing procedures that previous people used, but I, I think the last, like, really, you know, strong person that was here was Kevin, and that was already back in 2018, 2000, I think, mid-19. So it's been a good three years since there's been continuity in the finance function. You know, and just having such a small, small department with the halftime, or you know, 60% accounting technician, you know, it, that presents challenges with work and with, you know, oversight and. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, we definitely have to look at the accounting policies and procedures manual, so.
Okay.
Something on my to-do list.
I, I think it really speaks to the need to have really good documentation for processes. And, you know, maybe three years ago, there was some reasonably good documentation. I think it's been eroded a bit by the turnover that occurred during that time. So that, that just meant coming into a situation that I think was a bit less well-structured than it should be. And one of the things in terms of a recommendation related to continuity of personnel, et cetera, is to shore up those procedures, to shore up those processes, to ensure that we have also regular closing of the books, as Bryce mentioned. And certainly Catherine and I have talked about, so that if Catherine wins the lottery, breaks my heart and goes somewhere, then we do have documentation, we do have things that are closed, you know, sort of, if not up to the minute, but up to a reasonable point, so that we don't drop anyone into a similar situation.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you for clarifying.
Also, I, just another thing to note. I'd say, over the past few years, the accounting system that we use has, it has two different modules. It has like an more user-friendly web-based module, and then it has like an older, almost very antiquated module. So, you know, kind of the processes and procedures just related to the software probably were different than they were four years ago than they are now. And there's a lot more capability of being able to have everything, you know, accessible in the accounting program, like having, you know, our invoices in the system attached to things, but everything is still pretty paper-based here. You know, and switching to, you know, I, I really would like to get us to a point where we don't have to rely on being here in the office, or, you know, taking massive boxes of paper home, which I have done many times now, but it, we're still pretty paper-based right now. So, you know, getting to a more, a less paper-based model would be really great, and I think that would really also help the audit run smoother in future years. So hopefully, you know, by July of this next year, we'll have a good process in place where we can actually start, you know, having everything scanned into the system and attached.
If I can add, sorry. I've already seen Catherine and Rena starting to implement these things and notice where some weaknesses are and where they can improve. But I, I really think the city is in good hands with them.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Can I, can I piggyback off of that a little bit? I didn't know, Holly, if you had any additional questions?
I do. Go ahead. I'm done with that piece.
Okay. Just to clarify, so we didn't close the period on a timely basis this year at various times, that's what I'm gathering. Are we saying that that's new? Did we previously close the periods in a timely manner, and now we're not? Or did we always not close the periods in a timely manner?
I can't really speak for, you know, going very far back. I'm, I'm pretty sure that Kevin closed, he had a closed procedure monthly that he used. The physical books are not closed for quite some time, so I have to go back, and that's going to be a big project of, like, just physically locking them, you know, and then making sure that it doesn't, you know, that it still matches every single audit in previous years and going forward, you know, but I don't.
That's a good thing.
Working in a, a set of books that are not locked, so it's something that, you know, has to, has to be, everyone has to be aware of that, because if they, if it was even just a year back that wasn't locked, I'd feel more comfortable, but they haven't been locked for quite some time, and it might, it might have a function, it might be a function of the software. And from what I was researching, when you close, there's an issue sometimes with projects, and so that may be the reason that people didn't physically close, you know, in the system. But there has to be some kind of workaround to that, so that you can lock them, because I will have to do that.
This, this is making my heart hurt a little bit. Were we using, did we move off of, we used to use Blackbaud, right? So now we're using something else, I forgot.
We still use Blackbaud. It's just, it's called Financial Edge NXT. It's Blackbaud's, it's the same, I think, program that you used, you know, the, the database version versus the.
Yeah, that's fine. Like the all-prem version versus public, that's fine.
Yeah, but they're connected to each other, so if you do something in database, it affects the other one and vice versa.
Sure. I've never seen an accounting system that doesn't have an auto-close after a period of time. But I, I would, I guess, I don't, I don't have the details, so I, I, I I see what you've identified here. I think these are all important. And I, I guess I just have concerns over the internal control framework that we're talking about, and did you consider, I guess, Bryce, when you were doing the work, and we noted at least four material weaknesses, did you, that, was that a consideration in an unqualified opinion? Because I, for material weaknesses is pretty significant, I would say.
Yes. But working through these weaknesses, or we were able to identify the areas that needed closing that hadn't been closed, and Catherine was able to do those. And so the numbers are good, but getting there took a little work.
Okay. And so one of the areas, I mean, account reconciliation, I don't, I don't, you know, reconciling asset module to the ledger seems like not something that we need a manual for. That just seems like something that is a thing that you do. But on the item here that you identified at the bottom, IT review, in the actual management letter, it gives a little bit more detail here. It, the letter states that the city's accounts were compromised and unauthorized funds were withdrawn. Can you elaborate on that?
Catherine can give you more details, but it was brought to our attention that somebody had got into the bank account and was.
So the day that I started, actually, someone, well, I think it was actually a few days before I started, the, the fraud in the banks. There was Bank of America fraud. So somebody was getting into the bank account, and, you know, first they tested it with very small credits, and then they took out money. And it started before I, I started here. However, on my first day on October 4th, was, I think, the largest check that, it was a forged check in the, it was like a little over $40,000. And there was also an E, there were multiple ACH that came out. So I, I've been dealing with that pretty much since I started. We haven't, we've recovered all the. We haven't, we've recovered all the funds, the bank, you know, either we intercepted or recovered the money that first, those first few weeks that it was happening. And then we instituted positive pay through Bank of America. It's like this cash pro module, positive pay. And so you have to submit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar.
Okay, yeah, so you had, yeah, so, so we have that now as, as a control. The, the all of the money was reimbursed by Bank of America except for forty five thousand dollars. And that forty five thousand dollars, we put a claim into the insurance company. And we actually just, this morning, let us know that they will be covering it. So all but twenty five hundred right now have been recovered. That's our deductible. And I did just write a letter to Bank of America asking them to at least cover the deductible of twenty five hundred or I threatened to leave them because it's their fault. They should have covered the forty five in the first place, in my opinion, but they, whatever, they, they didn't. So hopefully we'll have recovered all of the funds. But it has been a good amount of work and it, in my opinion, was a coincidence that it started on my first day. Because when people know that there's a change in, you know, financial managers, it's like the perfect time to attack. Because there's, you know, the continuity is not there right away and they can, you know, if they can get into your system and they know that you're not monitoring it for three days because you have to change, you know, you have to get on the account and it takes time just to to be added to an account. So some, I mean, I, I, I think there should be some more continuity in who has, you know, the oversight of at least the cash and the banking. How, how that could be done with such a small place is kind of difficult to say.
Well, it, it's.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh. No, I'll, I'll save that for another time. Okay, I'm gonna switch topics for just a second. Bryce, can you elaborate on the procedures that were performed and how we got comfort over the investment activity? It's kind of a large portion of our overall fund balance. And I, I, I just, I know that we talk about it a little bit, but I'm, I want to make that piece, you know, to I'd like to at least get a, a sense of your, of your assessment and in doing the, any of the internal control work or the testing around our investment activity. Did you, did you know anything there? Because that, that wasn't called out here in the report, so.
So it wasn't specifically called out, the general ledger closing procedures, that's kind of talking about the cash reconciliations not being closed every so often. This, the cash reconciliations were off for a little bit. Kevin had trouble with it, and so he used to do his reconciliations manually. Paul came in and started doing it in the system, but he didn't close the books. Anytime an entry is posted subsequently, it sometimes affected previous reconciliation. So the cash reconciliation kept changing on us throughout the process. And so we, we did spend a lot of time looking at cash and making sure that we reconciled correctly. We kind of Catherine performed her reconciliation, we recreated that doing our own procedures. And then we did look at the UBS account, life and camp, I forget where else, Wells Fargo accounts.
That's it. Oh, yeah.
So we did look at those and spent some time working on making sure those were reconciled properly. Does that answer your question or not?
Yeah, I think a little bit. I'm also thinking about the controls over activity within the camp and lay fund within the camp and city portion of camp and leaf. Like, did we look at procedures, processes or controls around that area as well?
Not specifically during this audit. It's, I think it's pretty straightforward with who's authorized to move money back and forth between those. And then related to, as going back to the Bank of America account, there's it's all presented to, I think, Hank Stratford first and then to the city council. So not a ton of look at the controls because we've looked at them before.
There really wasn't a ton of activity in any of those accounts. There wasn't a ton of transfers back and forth or you know, the UBS really the money just, they don't transfer into UBS very often. Transfers were coming out of UBS. They, they would transfer the interest income out of UBS on a monthly basis. But I have stopped that for now and I'm just evaluating it. So we're not transferring anything out of UBS at this point. We're just reinvesting the interest income. But I think that these are all really important things to look at when we're assessing the investment policy. I think that I, I'd like to have a clear path of what's allowed and what's not allowed. So like, you know, first, like you could, you only have certain, certain ways that you're allowed to transfer money. And you know that, you know, pretty much you never take from camp or you never take, you know, you only take from life or, you know, it's only one way. It's not like you're able to do anything. But I think that's an important thing to look at when we're assessing the investment policy.
Okay, no, I, I, I agree. I guess my concern that I'm thinking about is, you know, if we were, if we had unauthorized access into the bank account for either withdrawals via check or other method. The, the other investment account also, in accounts plural, also have a significant balances. And I'm not sure if we are undergoing the same rigor of monitoring on a daily basis that we do with our other accounts. And if we're not, it may be something to consider as a, as a overview item.
We are, I, I log into those accounts weekly and they do have much more difficult procedures around getting money out. It's not very easy to just take money from late or from camp. Or from, you know, there's, there's procedures that you have to have multiple double verification, you know, before you can do anything. So not very simple. And for UBS, which is where most of the money is, you can't take money really, you know, you can't, I guess you could, but you can't, it's, most of the money is tied up in CDs, so.
Okay. I guess my last question here is, I'm trying to add it on the thing. So the IT review. Is this, did the item, did the recommendations that are here, periodic password changes, remote access safeguards, network access safeguards, mobile device restrictions. Were those just tangential in the course of your regular work? Or was there something that led you to look at these items specifically?
I think it was tangential. We th- there's this issue with the Bank of America and money being taken. And so I was thinking of what are some possible safeguards that could be implemented? And I just listed a few of the many potential ones. So there wasn't anything exactly for remote access safeguards. I just know that people are working from home from time to time or network access. There wasn't anything specific there. It could be though that people are not updating their passwords enough until somebody got in to an email address. That's just an idea I had. There was nothing specific for these particular bullet points.
That, that would be the most benevolent of, of rationale.
And if I could speak a little bit to that, because it's something that Catherine and I have been talking about since she started and we have so the city has through MPA cyber insurance and excess cyber insurance, which we've implemented in the last two years. And so we actually had a call with them last week to talk about, you know, what can they do to help us get essentially a cyber audit done so that we can put in place all the safeguards we need to put in place. Because we have, I would say kind of a a bit of a homegrown system that has developed over time that is not probably sufficient. It's not horrible because we, we had to fill out application for this cyber insurance and nothing came up in that that flagged immediately. But from an operational standpoint, we know there are improvements we need to make. And so we, through MPA and through the cyber insurance company, they've brought on a partner to help, you know, agencies, particularly small agencies, do the cyber audit. So, you know, other than the bank account, which we, you know, stepped down on pretty hard as soon as Catherine got here. We are looking to kind of look across the board, you know, so if Bryce says, well, they, they didn't, he didn't see anything per se, but those are the areas that would typically be the case. So now what we want to do is figure out, okay, what's the recommendation that we need to do to maintain a good presence with our insurer? Because the insurer has in their mind what they want to see in order to not have claims. And so basically, that's a big piece of where we're headed with this. But it is absolutely critical that we move beyond the basics of security and move into a more sophisticated IT security process.
Okay. Thank you.
I jump in, ask a quick question. That's totally taking us down a, a different tangent. I'm gonna go down this rabbit hole anyway. How did you find? How did you find the fraud? And the reason why I'm asking is how do we know others have not occurred? So can you can you tell us how you found it?
The bank fraud?
Yeah.
Um, well, the first day that I started, Sandra let me know that the that there were tiny credits coming out of the bank account. And so then we went back and started looking to see that. So I, I would say from up until June, everything's good because I, I've reconciled every single month in, in last year. I went back. So June from all of fiscal, all of the last fiscal year, we're good with our cash. Now, when the audit is over, I'm going to be looking at July through current. Which I haven't done yet. You know, I've looked at them broad level, but I have to actually go in and re, re reconcile. Right now, I think everything is, you know, semi closed through September. And I mean, since I've been here, what was that?
Did you, did you say September, month nine?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Some, so it's kind of semi closed, but I need to go back and examine those months I wasn't here. Get a comfort level for those. So and then close those months. So those months aren't actually, you know, physically closed in the books. And that's part of the reason that our cash was off, as Bryce was saying, because if you, you're not closing physically in the books, then there were things that were posting or voids that would affect previous periods. So so, I mean, you know, we, we've looked at all the bank statements from July going forward. I just need to go back and examine them again.
Okay, so it was credits that were coming in that she was able to see? And how often was she checking the accounts? I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep beating this horse, but.
I don't know. I, I do not know how often Sandra was checking the accounts.
Okay.
I check them daily.
Okay.
I even check them on vacation. I'm obsessed. And we do, with the cash pro, no, it's not. The cash pro thing, well, that's what the bank told me is the only solution. Be honest, that's what Bank of America said. They said that there's no other solution that you should, everyone should be checking their bank accounts daily. And that this bank fraud is just rampant. So I'm just glad that we're not the city of Compton. We, they, when we, I was filing all the insurance paperwork. The accident, insurer accidentally sent their claim to me and it was for eight hundred ninety thousand dollars in fraud. So.
Bad on multiple levels.
Yes.
The fact that you got theirs is not good. I, I don't know. Everything is hurting, it's hurting myself, my, my sense of order at the moment.
There's still, you know, there's still the, in the back of my head, still thinking or considering changing banks. But whether or not that's going to change anything, we still have to have positive pay.
Who, who do we use? We use?
We use Bank of America.
All right.
That was it. That was the last question I had about that. Thank you.
So other questions from the committee, the action that we are asking the committee to take is to hear the presentation and recommend that it get forwarded to the council for, you know, acceptance. But happy to answer any other questions as well.
Asking your piece. Can you guys still hear me? Okay. Say something because I don't think I can hear you.
We could hear you.
Oh, okay, perfect. Will this full packet be going to them? And is it possible to get the version that we just saw today from Bryce so that it's got the charts in there included as well? But I have a couple of.
Are at the back. They're slightly different.
Yeah, yeah. The numbers versus pie. That's all. Yeah, it's fine. It's a, some people might like the pie chart visual, if you can include that too. But I have a question. If we can go back to page twenty seven, if they're gonna get this full package, I have a couple of questions. But now I put pages on top of pages.
Seven of the PDF or?
The printout. So let me, it should be, it should be the whole thing. Should be the whole thing.
Is it the revenues by source?
I have to go back to mine because now my pages that I didn't staple are all out of order. Sorry. Twenty. Of course, I've got fifty six. Hold on, please.
I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing because, you know, the PDF has page numbers and the audit has page numbers and the staff report has page numbers and.
Oh, let's see here. I see it this page. Okay, I'm gonna lose my mind. It's just frustrating. I knew I should have put this before the call started. Found it. It literally has number twenty eight on the bottom of the page. But let me see what it says in the online.
What is?
For the, is it for the MDNA?
It is titled Analysis of Business Type Activities and page twenty seven. On the other side, it's actually twenty seven that I want. There's two pie charts, Analysis of Governmental Activities.
Okay, so this is the revenue by source page.
Yes, thank you. That is what it says in the chart. I just have a couple of questions. Can, one, it's difficult to read these pie charts. The people are gonna really be looking at them just because they don't line up by year. So a, and they're not in the same locations around the pie chart. Not that big a deal, but can somebody explain to me between the capital, stop laughing?
No, I mean, the colors change from year to year.
The colors, well, the colors changed and they're different categories now. So I had to really go back and like tick and tie to figure out what I was looking at. So for the
There's a typo on the bottom one too.
Yes, a couple of typos. Franchise fees, extra R and grants, but that wasn't what I was looking at. But you can fix those while you're in there. The cap grants and contributions. The little tiny purple sliver in the June to the top chart. What happened there? Can somebody explain that one to me between the two years?
I think these may be updated. I don't think they're properly requesting.
Oh, you know what? I found it. It's because the color change.
Yeah, it's easier to see in the table, actually. No, there was a big change, you know, from twenty twenty prior year, it was five hundred fifty thousand. And then the current year is forty two thousand. So that's like a ninety percent decrease.
Okay. And then.
It's probably like a one time activity, but I, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, what are cap grants and contributions? That's mainly my question.
It's a better question.
Let me see if I can pull that up.
Okay.
I'm getting there. Wonder if that was KERS funding maybe in twenty twenty.
We didn't have any in twenty twenty.
Okay, so it was not KERS funding? Okay, so it was not CARES funding?
We didn't have anywhere near that much CARES funding.
I might have to get back to you unless Catherine has any.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to research that also. I don't have that.
We'll have to look at what was in 2020 because that's what was in 2020 that we're not seeing in 2021. And I'm not finding it quickly, so.
Okay, so there's two. So I'd like to know what the, I'm going to assume it's operational grants. It just says op grants and contributions and cap grants and contributions. There's two. And I see that they're both in both charts, just in different places. I'd like to know what both of those are. And then I also wanted to know what was included in the miscellaneous category. Especially since I, I can see now the miscellaneous and the gain loss on sale of assets are now in the same sliver for 2021. And they had two separate ones last time. I just want to understand what's in miscellaneous too.
So, I mean, we, you know, we can give you a list of what's in miscellaneous. It is literally a ton of different little, I'm just trying to find my general. So it's everything from like our meeting room fees and our Clayton Community Gym Rental and
Okay.
A whole bunch of things that are general, small fee amounts typically make up that total of other revenues.
Okay, that's, that's good now. That's fine. But the other two, I'd love to know what those two are.
So I'm looking at 2020 right now for capital grants. The largest item was $385,000 to fund 303. Titled Federal Grant Local Streets Roads Shortfall.
Oh, that was, so that 308,000 is federal transportation money that flowed into, at the time we assigned that. It's called O-BAG two. It was part of a, it came from the feds through A-BAG, One Bay Area Grant O-BAG. In case you hear that acronym. It was assigned to the Pine Hollow Road Improvements Project with the anticipation we would use it for that. That project was kind of split into two components, a planning component and a construction component. When that happened, Concord, who's our partner on that, was able to get a grant for the planning function. So we didn't need the 308 for the yet. That would be for construction. It turns out we're in the process of applying through A-BAG CCTA to reprogram that money because Pine Hollow won't be ready for construction improvements in time for us to meet the spending requirement on that. So there's a lot of history around that 308, but the 308 is federal funds that flowed through that One Bay Area Grant. Grant, O-BAG Grant. And we haven't spent it yet, but it's been, because it was on the capital side, it typically gets shown as spent in the year that it's appropriated. But it's actually going to end up being even more complicated than that because of the timing issues that we ran into. And the turnover in city engineers, which really hurt us on that one.
Okay.
And then the second largest item was the Cal Recycle Grant for about $86,000. Two together made up for something.
The 86,000 is related to paving because the paving project got delayed so much. Paving project that's about to start in March, April of this year, assuming it doesn't rain a lot. We are in the process of getting an extension on that Cal Recycle Grant so that we can apply it to the cost of the paving project for, essentially it's a rubberized surface that we use in some of the types of pavement treatments. Again, it, we thought it got budgeted in a particular year because we thought we were going to do the paving project in that year. And so it's, it's but it's a one-time grant. We haven't actually spent it yet, but the grant came in as a grant source. So, you know, three oh eight plus eighty-six, eighty-three or eighty-six for the Cal Recycle one. Those two won't come back. It is appropriate to show them is not recurring because they are one-time related to projects.
Okay. And, and those are the cap grants and then the operational grants you'll still, did you have a chance to find those two, Bryce?
Operating grants are typically SLESIF, which is our annual grant funds for police services. I do not remember what SLESIF stands for. It's a long thing, obviously, but it's a police operations grant. That is typically about a hundred-ish per year. So operating grants are a million and they went down to just about 900,000. I'd have to, so the SLESIF wouldn't have changed significantly between those two. That may be in part the, we had a grant for the local hazard mitigation plan that we've now spent because the council has, we've completed the work and the council's adopted our local hazard mitigation plan. So, you know, again, that was a, you know, a one-time, but it wasn't a capital. It was a planning grant, so.
Okay. And then, uh, thank you. Then on fifty-seven, the number of full-time employees is listed at twenty-six, but I thought it was.
It's twenty-six.
Twenty. Twenty-six point two full-time? I thought that part there were.
Twenty-six point two FTE. It's twenty-five full-time positions and two point six positions, which make up one point two FTE. So that's twenty-six point two.
Okay. Okay, fair. All right. I was just wondering where the part-time is, but you're adding them up together and sticking them as a.
That's lovely government speak. FTE, full-time equivalent. So we, we think.
Equivalent, not employee. I see.
Yeah.
Because right now it says that there's a staff of twenty-six full-time employees, which to me is different. That's a full, that's a, that's a one-person thing.
Twenty-six point two FTE.
We should probably change the language of that, right? Right? So change to twenty-six point two full-time equivalent.
It's twenty-five full-time employees and two part-time employees. All told is twenty-six point two full-time equivalents. Nerdy government speak.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to get my pages back in order and you can go, Jeff, while I'm finding my, my next one.
I don't have other questions, but I, I will say. Okay, so don't take this the wrong way. And Catherine, I'm, I'm really glad you're here and I know that you have been given a, a, a difficult task. So thank you for, for rolling up your sleeves and doing that. But I gotta say this is not great. And the current state that things are in, I, I mean, I would, if I, how do I say this? I'm surprised that we can have an unqualified opinion with four material weaknesses of this magnitude. And the types of things that we're talking about, lack of closing the books, unreconciled accounts, not, you know, fund movement, not balancing. The IT stuff I get because that's a lot harder, but the other things that we're talking about are like very significant. And it, it, I'm concerned about the, the overall control environment and just our general operations. So I know that that means that you have a lot of, a lot of things ahead of you. So if you need additional support, please speak up. Because this is, this is important for us to get right. As, as we're, if we're going to be recommending that this gets sent to the full council, I would only do so contingent on that we also require a plan of action to both identify inventory, all the things that we believe needs to be done. Not just the material weaknesses I've identified, but a complete internal list. A project plan on how we are going to address them with both scope, timing and cost. And then I'd like to see regular report outs on the progress of those activities. I mean, as an audit committee, which I think we are, I think, you know, it's our responsibility to make, to give oversight over these things. And so I, I think to do that, we need to see those regular updates that where we have a starting point of where we're at. And then we can identify what actions we've taken to address them on an ongoing basis to monitor and make sure that there's, that we're making sufficient progress. And then in addition to that, if you happen to run into roadblocks or other things that need clearing to assist you, then that would be a good forum for us to talk about those things as well. Because it, it, these things can get away from you very quickly. And I think a lot of them have here. But they, they take much longer to fix. So it's important to to be very diligent in how we address and systematic. And I, I think that that type of report out and identification of a plan is the best way to do that. I, I mean, there's, there's lots of things here, but that's, that kind of is an umbrella activity that covers all the things. Because like, really? This is not good. So I, I would like, I, if it were me, like, you're, you're new to the role. So no, not enough on you at all. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. But if it were me and I was, and this was me over any amount of time, I, I would, I would be, either I would be fired or the people that were doing it would be gone because that's, this is not okay. So make sure you get that, that message and that we address it post haste.
I, and I will say just in further support, two things for Catherine. One, she's been saying the same things you're saying since day one. And so I think there's complete alignment on that general direction. So thank you for that. And the second thing is, and Catherine and I have been talking about this and, and she does need additional assistance to get us to a point where we need to be. That of course will take some assistance from either an outside accounting firm, not proper because they're our auditor, but an outside an accounting firm to assist us.
Independent.
Yeah, there you go. So we will, when we bring this forward, we'll also bring forward a recommendation on a an expenditure to support that to get us to where we need to be. Because we probably have at least six months to get us where we need to be.
I would be optimistic.
I did say at least.
Based on this, that would be optimistic.
About eleven months.
Okay, we're, we're getting, we're getting closer.
So that when we're in this-ish position next year, rolling into our thinking about the audit, we're in a much happier spot.
Also, just so, I'm just so that you guys are aware also, I believe that because there's been turnover and it, pretty much most turnover nowadays, you can attribute to the pandemic that we can use, I'm pretty sure we can use our funds to, at least for the project base of catching us up. You know, it's just a consideration when we're looking at, you know, how it'll affect our overall budget. But I, I'm happy that you said that, Jeff, because I, I don't know how long anyone could last in my position knowing the things that have happened. You know, and I have to be able to function at a certain standard and I can't work eighty hours a week forever.
Let us know what you need and with the recommendation of how we're going to get there and, and, and we'll talk about how we can support.
Yeah, thank you. And I also want to include a succession plan, not that I want to leave it. I think that it's a very important part of modeling something. And when it is, it's such a small accounting department. You know, if we had multiple people doing things like two staff accountants and an accounting manager and a finance director, you know, it would be different. You probably wouldn't need us. But I think that since just one finance director and one part-time accounting technician, you know, having some kind of plan in place that's an outside place actually knows your processes and procedures, I think is an important consideration.
All right, we'll talk.
Thanks.
Let me say, I, I love, Jeff, that you're, you're concerned about the state, the state of the accounting department and that your desire for them to get better. And I love Raina's support for Catherine. I think everything's in good direction right now. There's a lot of work to be done, but I just love the tone at the top and how it trickles down.
All right, well, I, I didn't mean to step on your thunder or anything, Holly. I didn't know if you had additional questions.
No, you're good. It's all good. No, and I don't, I can't find them in my hodgepodge of papers, but I think we covered most of them. In fact, I think one of the earlier questions you asked was one of them. Okay, so.
We would like a little bit of formality of a motion in a second and then we can do a voice point because there's only two of you. And we will then take it forward to the council with your additional direction regarding the items that you laid out, if that's your motion.
Yeah, so I, I would move that we, that we forward to the full council with the additions of the recommendations that I had laid out. I don't want to say them again, but I think you have the tape.
I'll, I'll second.
All right.
Can you call the role between the two of us, please?
Council member one.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Tillman.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. All right. That was the only action item that we had. So item number four on the agenda is adjournment and I will adjourn the meeting at four thirty-eight PM.
Thank you both very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Janet.